Okay, great. Calling this meeting to order at 5:35 PM. Thanks for being here, everybody. We will start with our flag salute.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, trustee Trin.
Here.
Director, I am here, and trustee Brooks is absent this evening. Moving on to approving tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, trustee director for the motion, trustee Trin for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to public statement. As is typical for our study sessions, we will take public comment at the beginning, and then we will take public comment at least one other time during the session. So we will open up public comment now. We'll start with in-person audience members if there's public comment. Seeing none, Joe, if we could check Zoom to see if there's any public comment.
Yes, thank you, President Watkins. Good evening. I'll be calling on speakers during public comments in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks, and once time has expired, we will move to the next speaker. I will pause a moment for any raised hands. We have one raised hand, Daniela Gordama. Give me a moment while I set up the timer. Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi. Well, my comment is more of a question. I've been advocating within following up on our desires parents and our will to go help about each to supervise basically during lunchtime and any other times that are needed where more eyes are needed, where more parents or supervision is needed. And sadly, I haven't had any response more than we're gonna have meetings, we're gonna see what we end up talking in that meeting. This is a follow-up from a meeting that we had on Zoom more than a year ago, where Mr. Choa was present and a lot of the district board members were present and other district staff was present as well without each parent. And I've been following up as Ms. Jung left, and she was kind of the person that got these things her hands. The only thing that we've been offered is to help direct traffic before and after school. And that's really all we've got. And honestly, parents are like feeling, and we all feel like, that's kind of something to be like, okay, yeah, this is the first step. If it works, then we're gonna move on to the next step. And we've been dealing with this for more than a year now. I I've been trying to bring this up again, as it worked in another middle school that the district mentioned, that parents were volunteering in another school, and we we asked for Vowidge to have the same thing. Parents are asking what's happening. I've been trying to kind of pull people back to be like, hey, don't don't start like a lot of communication on this because it's gonna be crazy. So let me let me follow up. But I haven't had any communication back regarding this matter. And honestly, I just, at this point, I feel very disappointed because we're like asking and asking and asking at email several times, and there's no response at all. So I just wanna know if there's any follow-up, is there any other response rather than, yeah, you're gonna direct traffic before and after? I mean, my daughter is leaving Vowage next year, like she's going to high school. But I still have a little one that's coming to Vowage in the coming years, and I honestly wanna know if this is something that we should keep pursuing, or if this is hard now from like this is our last response from the district and from the school itself. So that's that's my question, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, President Watkins. I don't see any other public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. And if we can just make sure that we take down the information from that individual and get back to them, that'd be great. Awesome. Okay, we will move on now to our update. All right, great. I'm gonna go ahead and get a chat. Good evening, everyone. I'm Caneta Cook, Director of Curriculum Instruction. It's really wonderful to have an opportunity to be here tonight to share with you an update on our middle schools. I'm enjoying this evening with Dr. Christian Rubacaba. He's also going to be part of the presentation tonight, and he'll have a chance to share with you some updates around our wellness goal. So tonight's update is grounded in our strategic plan. And we will begin with talking about achieving and where we're at with ELA and math in this moment. Then we'll have an opportunity to hear more directly about our wellness goal and some initiatives that are currently happening at our middle schools. Throughout tonight, we will touch upon equity, and you'll have an opportunity to hear how we are opening up access for our students, not only our academic programs, but also social emotional wellness. And you'll also have an opportunity to learn how we've embedded that throughout the students' day. So we're first gonna begin by talking about math, and our students just finished our fall math sixth grade and seventh grade CFA. And so the data that you see in front of you is showing you the student performance meeting and exceeding standard. In green, that was last year's sixth grade data, and in blue is this fall's math six data. Also, on this slide, you can see the overall math seven data for our seventh graders. And one of the things I just wanna call out is that when you look at the eighty-one percent meeting exceeding standard for math seven, it really is showing us that our students are coming in stronger. And and that's something that we we definitely celebrate, right? Also, our students who are taking algebra are doing really, really well, right? And that would be an expectation of ours because we know that our students who are in that algebra class are ready for those standards and ready for that content. So really super excited to celebrate those gains. I wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive when we talk about math eight. Math eight student data, as you can see, we increased the percentage of students meeting and exceeding the standards measured by that CFA in those green subgroups that are called out, show the gains for those individual groups. Overall, there was an eight percent increase, which is, we were super excited about that and happy about the work that's happening with our math team, our math coaches, and the teachers who are teaching our students in math. Every day, they are putting in the work, and they are meeting regularly, weekly. We'll learn a little bit more from one of our coaches who's here tonight, just what that work entails and what that looks like on a regular basis. I just wanted to call out math eight because that that's wonderful news to see the improvement in our socioeconomic subgroups and our students with disabilities and in overall as well. And one of the things I mentioned early on was that tonight's presentation is really also about the equity goal and showing how we are opening access for students. And you can see on the left side, the number of students who are now accessing algebra as compared to the previous year, right? So when you look at the left graph, you can see that approximately, let's see here, seventy-six students, right? Seventy-six more students that are accessing algebra before they leave our schools as compared to the previous year. And on the right side, it's showing you the percentage of students who are Hispanic Latinx that are also now accessing algebra. We've increased that. So super important to know that the changes that we've made in our math pathways are having an impact. It's opening up doors, it's opening up access to our students. I'm gonna invite right now in this moment Laura Evans, who's one of our lead coaches, to come on up and talk a little bit about yes, there's perfect, talk a little bit about the coaching model and what we attribute these successes to.
And like any good superintendent, I'm gonna just have to be heard here. You know, because we're all part of the same educational community, we get information from many of the same places. So in our inboxes, we get updates from CSBA, from AXA, from Edsor, from, you know, the big newspapers, the LA Times, the Chronicle, others, they put out a lot of content. And you know, it it's sort of fascinating as an educator to see information get out to the public and come back and how it's interpreted. And much of what you have been reading up for the last two years is about addressing pandemic-related drops or pandemic-related gaps. And and you'll read about examples of school districts that heavily invest in tutoring, especially for kids who are at grade levels that take exams as a way to address learning gaps. And and those responses are very short-lived, and those responses do not carry from one from one time in a child's life to another. An example would be like doing a lot of third, fourth, and fifth grade tutoring doesn't have a statistical relevance to middle school learning. So what Laura's about to talk about is something I think is really it's one of the biggest things that this school board has done over the last five years, which is to elevate peer learning from our teachers, from our own experts. And Laura, I'll never get tired of bragging about her. She's just exceptional. But many, many colleagues that she works with are just incredible leaders and educators. And this next slide doesn't do it justice, but it tells the most important parts of of what's happening to to provide our kids with the kind of education we all wish we had when we were in school.
So I think we're trying to answer this question, how did we create a robust learning experience for our diverse group of students who've had diverse experiences learning math in the past? And also our diverse group of teachers. We have teachers where it's their first year of teaching with us. And we have teachers who are in their twentieth or more years of teaching with us. And this model that we've created around peer coaching is really answering that question. You know, lots of schools supply TOSs or coaches for teachers, but they're often teachers who are completely out of the classroom. And you forget really quickly what it feels like to work in a classroom. It is challenging. There are lots of things happening at once. Under our model, all of our coaches, or nearly all, are also teaching actively, and we're teaching what we're coaching in, which is allowing us to really be active in the moment with our teachers as they work. So we have daily in-class peer coaches, and it's focusing on creating a belonging classroom, having lots of quality academic discourse. We're spending lots of time sharing with each other, what are you trying, how are you doing that? How else could we try that? I have to steal that idea. That's fantastic. And we're filling this common language around how to talk about math discourse in the classroom and how to help it happen. We're creating daily lesson plans. So we have a set curriculum, and we, teachers in in the lead position, work together to curate those things. And we don't just curate them based on what we think. We meet regularly across districts. So an eighth grade lead from Burrell, Vowage, Abbott, Bayside, we all get together, we all got together just yesterday, and we'll say, so what do we remember from last year? What notes do we have from last year about what worked and didn't work? How might we curate this to answer some of the needs that we see in our students? And how do we take new ideas that are coming out and keeping them moving forward? So that sort of common planning time is allowing us to really create a robust curriculum that's responsive. You know, I think schools often have a problem with this teacher's doing it this way in that room, and that teacher's doing it that way in this room, and there's no connection. But because we curate this, we take input, we re-curate, and we send out, we find lots of commonalities in what teachers are doing. But it's not scripted and cookie cutter. You can tell that what's happening in each classroom is also what is unique and relatable. You can see how what happens in one room and the other room has that sort of continuity and still special to that teacher. So we're meeting weekly at site with our teams, and we're also meeting across sites with our teams. And just anecdotally, the eighth grade team met yesterday, and we were saying seventh grade last year said, at the end of the year, we're gonna take on extra solving for you all to help your students do well. And so the question of the team was, are you seeing evidence of that working? And every teacher in that meeting was like, yes, solving is going so much better this year. Kids are understanding it better. We're moving at a faster pace. They're going deeper. And like, that tells me that the kind of collaboration we're doing is working.
Laura, I also think in our profession, when you, when you, as as a district, when you adopt materials, when you, and they're about to talk about that in ELA and other subject areas. You know, i- if there's not enough support, it can result in a teacher feeling like they can't make decisions about how they teach, feeling like tomorrow's the day to start this next lesson. I'm, you know, almost like you know, the curriculum sort of dictates what you do. And what I see going to our math classrooms is I see teachers making decisions. Teachers saying, you know, we're gonna spend just this much more time to do this, but there's such a good reason for it. And because there's a support system, as you pointed out, each of our schools has math peer coaches. There's somebody not at a district office, like some of these district office people were way far away. This person's at your school. This person is like, in some cases, either in your classroom or just next door. So I think that is one of the more exciting things that I see is that day-to-day instructional decision-making, which is very empowering for teachers.
I know we're switching gears to ELA, but just wanted to pause, just because I know math has been a really important topic over the past couple of years, to see if there's any board questions or comments, and then we can also maybe see if there's, yeah, public comment.
Is, what is common formative assessment? Is that something that we create ourselves, or that's like a a thing that everybody does the same out in the world?
Sure, I can, I can respond to that. The common formative assessment is something that we create here in our district. The math coaches, me, and they collaborate around not only the creation of that, but also the scoring and the anchoring of the rubric to make sure that they're all grading the assessments similarly. So they have regular meetings, not only where they look at it from year to year. So for example, one of the things that Laura mentioned was that they looked at the CFA, the Common Formative Assessment, to see if they wanna change anything. It's all measuring the standards for this point in the school year. It's a dipstick measurement. So it's not a growth assessment. It's essentially the standards that have been covered at this point in the school year. But the most important piece to that is teachers having an opportunity to calibrate how they're going to score that so that you tease out the subjectivity that can sometimes creep into looking at assessment and scoring. So that's something we create in-house, and other districts have like benchmark and CFAs.
So I was just wondering, then, what do we tell ourselves when we look at the algebra that it's almost it's so close to a hundred percent? How are we explaining that, what are we as a district or people who are looking at this data? Because that's definitely an outlier when you look at sixth and seventh and eighth grade. Like, is algebra, is it like, are we just amazing, or is it too easy? Is it like, what, like, what's the explanation?
All of those students would say no.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I
You're way off.
It's like acceleration was the, it's like eighth grade algebra is the answer. So I'm just curious, like, what do we, what's the story here?
Right, right. There's sort of, there's sort of two things happening. There are students who are taking the double block, right? And then there's students who are taking the algebra-only course, and that algebra-only course is a pretty small subset. Those are also students who pass or has been accelerated in the past. I believe, is this the first group who have
Yeah, they
completed the
The heterogeneous.
Yes. Yeah, they had a heterogeneous sixth grade. They had independently learned seventh grade content. So many of them were using Khan Academy or private tutors on the outside. So they built this really robust, so robust, that they were able to prove to us from very high standards that they already knew seventh grade content. So they were put in eighth grade. Now, I wouldn't believe that those families would necessarily say, okay, so now you're in eighth grade math as a seventh grader, and and, you know, we're not gonna continue to encourage you to study outside of the class. These are probably students who are still actively studying. So when they go into that algebra, that algebra is an algebra standard, like what is high school algebra? What should the questions look like? It's pulled directly from the algebra curriculum. The curation is, how do we not just make it multiple choice, but how do we tease out your thinking? So it's the standard, and you're also looking at students who who, you know, work really hard and who have families supporting them. I think a more interesting measure will be when our double block students
That's, that's what I'd be interested to see.
And and I think an equally important consideration is to say we wanna evaluate our eighth grade double block algebra scores in relation to ninth grade algebra scores in San Mateo County. In other words, to use a, a, an analysis of students who didn't percent, maybe some did, but many didn't. To just to try to understand what that looks like for a student that doesn't. We think two things are gonna happen based on how we've developed these pathways and based on the kind of work our teachers are doing. We think that students that take sixth grade math and seventh grade math and eighth grade math are gonna finish eighth grade math with us and meet or exceed standards at rates that we haven't seen in many years. We think that students that take the double block will be prepared to take whatever ninth grade math class they take at, in the San Mateo Union High School District, at rates that are far ahead of what we were at in the past. And then I think our algebra students are showing us they're already but as Laura pointed out, many do different things, Monster Math, Russian Math, and a variety of other tools outside of the district. And that's great, and I'm happy for them to do that. And and when we get to that calculus, that end process, we'll go back and look at all of our strategies to try to make relationships and ties between our intended outcomes and then our outcomes. And, you know, it's it's exciting. This is the first year that we get to do that because these sixth graders have come through our program. So it's really sort of an exciting time to to look at that.
And when our our teachers make the common formula or have the common form assessment, they're asking at grade level standard questions. And they always have more, right? They're always looking for deeper and bigger challenges. But we wanna report out to the public on standards. And so they're they're definitely getting challenged questions. It's just they might not be in a common formative assessment because that might be above, you know, grade level standard.
A couple of questions. One, can you, all just for like everyone's knowledge, just like refresh the memory for everyone around like the different, like sixth grade is heterogeneous math. And then I just think it's helpful to like situate the conversation, and that's so people know as we're talking about double block this and algebra this, and people might not remember.
So all our students take sixth grade heterogeneous mathematics. Then in sixth grade, families have a choice to either continue on to seventh grade math, or if they'd like to see if their student already understands seventh grade content, we have a series of assessments that students can take to show that they proficiently already understand seventh grade math. Now, that happens for a very small collection of students because how would you know seventh grade standards unless you took seventh grade math? And it usually tends to be students who have studied outside of our system. Maybe they take a private tutoring, maybe they study on Khan Academy, but but they've clearly, like, they've worked on the actual standards. For that small group, if they can show proficiency, they, as seventh graders, are placed in eighth grade math classroom with eighth graders.
But not a separate eighth grade.
Not a separate, with eighth
There are three hundred kids taking eighth grade math, and there are twenty-five kids who are seventh graders. They are assigned to any one of the sections of eighth grade math, which there was some, you know, back and forth about that. And you just really felt like, this is the course. This is the course we're teaching, and it's a rigorous course, and we want you to take it. And and that's important to note because it is not an attempt on our part to separate one group of kids from everybody else.
And so, and that small group will then take algebra together in their eighth grade year. But for other students who go into sixth grade math and then seventh grade math, during their seventh grade year, they get to choose, do I wanna continue with eighth grade math in my eighth grade year? Or would I like to do a double period of mathematics? Now, students get a double period of elective, so it's essentially taking math as one of those two elective options. So students can opt into taking a double period. And what happens is they, instead of having math on the block schedule, you have it Monday, and then Wednesday, Friday. You're now gonna have it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so that they can get all the hours necessary to cover all the content. So they're finishing it sooner, but because we're doing more mathematics in the year. And for those students, you know, they they get to do a double block and finish with eighth grade math completed and algebra completed. We have quite a few families that opt into that.
And then the algebra only is for
So that would be for the students who show proficiency in seventh grade math and take seventh grade math as an eighth grader and then algebra.
Got it.
And the the largest populations of students who choose algebra, choose it as a double block. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, cool. Thank you for that. Can you go back to the previous slide? So this is, I think that this is like really helpful for a couple of reasons. I think one of, you know, one of the biggest critiques or conversations that we had when we made the choice to move to the sixth grade heterogeneous math was that fewer students, we're gonna have access to algebra. And so I think the story that this tells is like the opposite of that. So that's great. And I think something that we like need to just be sure that we're, you know, sharing with our community that like we committed to, you all committed to make sure that that wouldn't be the case, and like, that is not the case. So thank you all for that. And I just think that that's really great to see. I also am happy to see that we're looking at kind of the dis-arrugated data and thinking about access. One of my questions here is around just, like, I think success here is what are the percentages of students in our district? And does this mirror that? Right now, it doesn't, right? And so how, like, I don't actually know what the percentages are, like, off the top of my head. I don't know if anybody has them. Diego, you might. I'd just be curious to know, like, how far off we are from that. And, you know, I don't know, it'd be interesting to think about like projections, like if we were to continue moving in like this direction, what would that look like?
And they are different for grade levels. So the middle school percentages are far different than the kindergarten percentages. So I would wanna look at
Yeah.
like grade bands, you know, to to get that cut this.
Just something, I, yeah, again, I don't like, I wasn't expecting to have an answer to that, but yeah, I just think that that, like, in my mind, is what would be success, right? Is that we're like really ensuring that there is like equitable access, which also just brings me to kind of this piece. I know you all brought up a couple of times, like, how students are entering into the seventh grade accelerated and, or skipping seven, essentially, and then doing algebra only. And it just, I I like, I understand that people are gonna do what they're gonna do outside of school in terms of like private tutoring and all of that, and there's like no control over that. I just wonder, are there things like we could be doing proactively to let students know that there are like free options, like, I don't, is Khan Academy still free?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so like things like Khan Academy, like, are, is that something we're like sharing with students, like if math, you know, like, we're seeing really excited students in sixth grade of math or in fifth grade, and like, we're letting them know that they have access to something like Khan Academy. So you don't need a private tutor to be able to like skip seventh grade and go to eighth if it's something like you really wanna do. I was just just thinking a little bit about that because I'd be interested in, like, polling the kids that got into or that are taking those accelerated courses, like how many of them have private tutors and not like necessarily something that I'm super like that. I don't love that, right? And so how do we, how do we like really ensure that equitable access? Um, and so how do we, how do we, like, really ensure that equitable access um, for, for kids and let them know that there are other options out there? And so maybe that's something we're already doing, but if not, something to put on the radar.
I think it's also true that when we meet with our sixth grade families, we really tell them, we recommend your child takes seventh grade math. When we, we explain why the, the um, pathway that exists for sixth grade and seventh grade, why, why we think it's a really great pathway. And others, you know, as you know, parents, we all have different, our own viewpoints on things. And I think that's sort of a very, you can speak to it, uh, Laura, from the perspective of yourself and your colleagues have created some videos and, and you'll actually hold meetings. I think there, David, the last couple of years, they've been Zoom-based meetings just to increase participation. But, you know, we have those, those really strong conversations with our parents.
And I'd say that to bring it to it, I, when you helped us land on pathways that allowed choice for more families, the double block so that more students could access, and then the proving proficiency in seventh grade so that students who have studied ahead of time do not find themselves in a seventh grade classroom where they already know the content. Like, that sort of flexibility that you brought to the table, I thought, really solved lots of problems for families. That skipping seven, not skipping, but showing proficiency in seventh grade is more similar to the old pathway in that, you know, families have students early, study early to get ahead. I hope that with time, they see the value of the double block.
I see.
That is not, if you love math, actually enjoy doing it more than one period a day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that, that double block is going to be where families go, well, this is more robust. This is now the system allowing my students to do lots of math and advance.
So that's what we're hoping students are doing.
Right, and I think the proof will be in the pudding. And time goes on and families say, gosh, that double block was really great.
Yeah.
More families will say, well, and that then, but, but the choice will be there.
Yeah.
I think when students also take a full sixth grade math class and a full seventh grade math class and a full eighth grade math class, they take and, and exceed standards or meet standards. They take skills with them to high school that make them answer that question, that survey question they get in ninth grade that says, I'm good at math. And they say, I think I am. Right? And, and that, as teenagers move on, that uh, you'll, you saw some pictures of some of my Empowering Student Voices, um, students that I meet with um, on a monthly basis here at the district office. And I told a, a room full of our math peer coaches, I talked to this student, she's brilliant and she's amazing, and you know, GPA is way up here and she's awesome, just a good human being, but also does very well in school. And she, she told me in this Empowering Student Voices meeting, she said, I hate math, I'm bad at math. I'm like, of course, I, like, I know your grades, you're actually doing really well in math, but her perception is, I hate math and math. And so we had this visit, these school visitations we held at Beresford and Meadow Heights and, was it George Hall? The first round we had, and the board was there, and we had people from the community show up. And that student was at the visit, and she said, we went into an elementary school math class where the students were sitting together and talking about math, and they were working on problems together. And they had, and she, she said, I never got taught math that way, and I wish that I had been in a math class like that when I was young because then I wouldn't feel this way. That's like, I, I packaged it, and then I, like, told this whole story to a room full of that peer coaches, and I said, keep going. It's, it's probably going to take years for some of these kids to get to the age where they can verbalize that, but you see it in classes.
Well, I also think to your point, like, and, and Superintendent Cho to your point around, like, tracking how students do in high school, like, seeing how that pans out in terms of students that, that stay the course of, like, what we're recommending and what that looks like versus, like, maybe pre-accelerate, what we're, um, so, yeah, okay, let's stop now. Other forward comments, questions?
Um, I'm, I'm wondering if, are, are we also pulling in our teachers at the, at our K eights that teach middle school level math? Like, are they also included in the um, the peer coaching model?
So Julie Mamet used to be our math uh, Tosa, right? And um, so she's at um, Parkside. And so we work with her a lot as she supports. Um, we have reached out to um, the NSM teacher. He's new, we're helping him get his feet under him. And it's harder, right? Because he's preparing for three different courses. So how does he choose? Who does he choose to collaborate with? Like, typically, he's a sixth grade team, the seventh grade team, the eighth grade team, and a Montessori, right? So they also want to do some practice that's true to Montessori. So that's a harder one to do, and that's one I would love to keep talking about how to support.
And we have our math um, elementary Tosas and teachers who um, also do a form of coaching. Do you want to speak a little bit to what happens in elementary? Cause your question's specific to elementary, Maggie, right?
Um, no, no. I'm asking about the K eight, K three teachers at our K eight school.
Oh, I see. Okay.
It's also um, true that at our K eight schools, because our, our upper grades are so much smaller, in some cases, you're talking about one teacher. Whereas at Abbott Middle School, there are six or seven math teachers, and pretty much at all of our middle schools, that's the number or maybe more. Um, so some of the peer coaching, there's more sort of, the web is sort of, you know, a lot more interesting when it's one teacher, especially if the teacher either transfers to a different grade, which has happened, or leaves the school district, then we have a new teacher. As Laura pointed out, it's, I think you want to let them get their feet under them and really get to know their students and their community. But I think the door is open, um, and that's probably a good place for us to start in terms of spring going into summer and figuring out how to create time to connect with the staff at both Parkside. And it sounds like Julie's already over at, at Parkside, so that's probably very natural for them, but, yeah.
And they usually have access and use all our material, and we send and we share and we, and, you know, we also want to be careful not to overload someone who's teaching three different courses every day.
Um, one more question I had was about the data. So we have, you know, some of our data we look at, looks at pre-pandemic data, and this one starts fall, you know, uh, it's fall twenty. This is fall twenty twenty-two. So do we have a sense of how it compares to pre-pandemic data? Um, in terms of the, um, the common formative assessment?
We can give that information.
Okay.
The assessments are different, so, you know, be a little, you know, we can still look at it, but we can, um, yeah, and I think we may have assessed that different timelines, David, you would know.
Yeah, we, we, we have the common formative assessment prior to the pandemic, so.
Oh, okay.
We had class assessments, but they just weren't, what we're trying to do now is really say every sixth grader in the district, regardless of the school you're attending, this is, what's, do you know what the, the timeframe is? Is it two weeks or a week in terms of giving the assessment?
Uh, there's a one-week window to give, and then after that, we have a week to grade.
So it's, it's pretty true that, like, if you look at it, you really are looking at an assessment that is, you know, similar enough across schools that you can say, yeah, we're looking at the same data. And I think in the past, we just, there weren't as many, you know, components that said, this exam is testing this, even if it was the same exam from one of our curriculum, it would have been maybe a teacher administers it even within the same school on a certain week, and another says, I need three more weeks. Well, that kind of changes how you interpret information. Um, it's still, I think, a, a good way for us to look back and then bring that to the board for some.
Thank you. Any audience public comment in person?
Joe, if you want to just take um, Zoom public comment on the math piece?
Yes, thanks again, President Watkins. Good evening. We're calling on speakers during public comment in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. Once time is expired, we will move to the next speaker. I'll pause a moment again for any raised hands. President Watkins, there are no public comments at this time.
Great. Thanks for indulging the math conversation. Thought it was important to give it. You know, we've spent a lot of time talking about math, so let's, like, celebrate where.
Couple of minutes more, not gonna hurt.
Right, right. All right, moving on. Over to you guys.
So now we're switching gears to talk a little bit about ELA and where we are um, in the ELA adoption and pilot process. So last school year, we started the adoption process. And it was really important to do a process around adopting new ELA curriculum that was not traditional. And the reason why I want to really call that out and underscore that is because it's really important for teachers to think about what does culturally responsive teaching mean? And what does it mean to use culturally responsive pedagogy in a classroom? So we spent all of last year, twenty twenty-two, anchoring the adoption committee teachers, and we had about twenty-four at the time each middle school represented, um, six teachers from each of the schools, multiple grade levels. We spent time anchoring them in not only the traditional stuff that you do in an adoption, which is the framework and the guiding documents from the state, but also thinking about asset-based classrooms. What does it mean to shift our mindset to think about assets that our students bring into a language arts classroom? Helping teachers build a shared understanding, we're on the adoption committee, what it means to teach uh, with a culturally responsive lens. And you can look at all the literature that's out there. There's different interpretations around that, right? But knowing that we were going into this process where we're going to look at adopting a new text, we wanted to kind of level the playing field and make sure everybody had the same foundation around what we mean when we say culturally responsive teaching. So we began the adoption process last year um, with that being really our goal. This year, where we are um, in the adoption process is um, currently piloting My Perspectives. And we started the year piloting curriculum called Amplify, and the teachers really wanted to take their time in piloting the curriculum. So they wanted to spend a whole quarter with one curriculum before moving on to the next. So now we're in second quarter, we're piloting My Perspectives. This is just to give you a sense of just our process when we're um, talking about adoptions. As I said, we took a non-traditional um, approach. Oftentimes, you start with um, grounding the teachers who are part of the adoption committee and the state's frameworks and guidance. And then you just start piloting. Again, we took time to really build that culturally responsive lens together. Um, beginning in quarter one, they finished piloting Amplify, had a debrief session. So really important that teachers have a chance to talk about what's working with the text, engage the publisher, have Q and A sessions, um, understand how Amplify is a online curriculum more so than it is um, hard copy, paper, pencil. And that was one of the things that came up kind of as a concern for a lot of teachers. So really capturing the notes around what is it like to use this in your classroom? And the reason why it's really important to take time to do that is because you're going to have to come back to those notes when you're trying to build consensus and trying to see, okay, which direction we want to go in and why. And, and that's another reason why it's so important to have every grade level be part of the process because how a textbook may um, teach the standards in sixth grade may differ greatly than how um, the standards are taught in eighth grade. So those debrief sessions give teachers together an opportunity to engage in that kind of discourse. We will have our debrief of pilot to My Perspectives at the end of January, and we'll be at a crossroads at that point where teachers will need to decide, um, are we ready to engage in a consensus vote? Meaning, we feel that we can look at Amplify and My Perspectives and say, they meet our criteria enough that we can have a vote about what we would like to recommend to the board? Or do we think, hmm, not quite enough there for seventh grade, but it's great for sixth? I think we might need to pilot it one more time and have a third pilot. So they're going to have that conversation at the end of January. So I put a big box around possible ELA textbook recommendation to the board in March because if they decide to engage in a consensus vote, a vote at the end of January, then we'll be ready to make a recommendation to the board. If not, then we'll need to have um, a third pilot. So we'll have to kind of see where we're at, at that time. Um, in collaborating with um, Dr. Christian Rubikabla, um, we were putting together a slide deck. And last week, I got an email from a teacher, and I just really felt that was really important to add it to this presentation because it really um, spells out what it's like for a teacher who hasn't had the, a chance to really pause to say, what does it mean to have culturally responsive um, textbook or text in front of a student? So this is from a teacher who teaches eighth grade ELA at Burrell Middle School, and she sent me this email last week. So I'm just gonna give you a moment, pause, so you can read it. So, yeah, she says she almost cried. When I read the email, I almost cried because it tells me that the whole year that we took to really ground ourselves in a shared understanding around culturally responsive pedagogy was well worth the time, right? When a teacher can now reflect, take a step back and, and engage with their students and say, hey.
Also, how many years that student sat in classes? I don't see anybody in the classroom. So there's like a pain behind it, you know? There's like this, like, hope, but then you're like, if you're, if you're that kid, you know, how many years have you been in classes that I just don't see people that look like me in the books that this school or this school district puts in front of me? So it just.
Yeah.
Thank you for adding.
So I also wanted um, to include an update from our multilingual services team led by Alada um, and Jeanette. Um, this school year, the um, middle school ELD teachers um, met with both Alada and Jeanette and shared really wanting to look at new materials. And so they began an adoption process for our ELD courses. So these new materials would be used um, for all of our ELD classes, so newcomers, foundations, ALAC. Um, they're currently piloting English three D, and they're almost at the end of that pilot. And then they'll start with um, Sabas, which is the same publisher, My Perspective, they'll begin that next. And they have a, a representative group of teachers who are collaborating with them around that. Um, the second um, slide is showing um, the proposal that the ELD team or the multilingual services team is looking at. This is really just brand information in terms of where they're at in their process, they're engaging with a committee um, to look at how can we rethink our ELD courses for students? And so what you see with twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, that's currently what most of our classes look like. And I say most of our classes because um, at one school, it might differ slightly in terms of the number of periods a newcomer student has ELD. But for the most part, this is what um, our pathway looks like right now. Um, newcomers have two periods of ELD instruction, and if the students in foundations or ALAC, they have one period of ELD instruction. Um, what the multilingual services team is looking at for next year, and again, they're in the very early stages, so this may change a little bit, but what they're looking at is essentially taking the newcomers and splitting that into ELD one and ELD two. So you can kind of see there, ELD one is for a student new to um, our schools, zero-one years. And ELD two is for um, a newcomer student who's been here one to two years. This is really intended to be more fluid and not as, right, currently, right now, our process is pretty um, stagnant, if you will. You take newcomer class, and then you move to the foundations, and then you move to, they're um, thinking about how can we have this be more fluid? Where if a student comes to our schools and they've been, say, here in the country for two years, they can go straight to, in this new proposal, ELD three. And it's just one period for all of these courses instead of having two periods for newcomers and one period for the others. So again, very initial stages, this may shift a little bit. And wanting to bring an update from our ELD team, this is kind of where, what they're working on right now.
So before we move on to one slide, to see if there are any questions about ELA anymore.
Let's go through until we get, maybe until we switch gears, we'll go with the next couple.
All right, perfect. All right, so our college and career courses. So um, super excited to share that we are growing this elective offering for those who don't know. Um, this is something that Superintendent Choa really championed when he began in our district. Um, it started, I'll never forget, um, um, a team of us going to. It started, I'll never forget, a team of us going to Salinas and seeing this in action. It was just an eye-opening experience, not only to see students from, you know, multilingual students, students who are in special education, students who are from so many diverse backgrounds in this class, in a Salinas classroom, engaged in hands-on activities in building drones and, you know, doing nursing units. It was just great to see. So happy to share that we are growing the program in our district. This year, we have increased at both Abbott and Bayside the course by three classes. So we've added three additional classes at both Abbott and Bayside. And at Burrell, they had last year, the course is a year long. And because of such high demand and kids wanting to have access to this class, they made it a semester-long course for this year so that we can have more students in there. Advantage we're maintaining, but we've also increased the capacity in terms of numbers using these classes. We've increased the total number of students from like, I think when it's, last year was around twenty-six, twenty-five to like thirty-ish in some of these classes at V outage. So it's really great to see that this program is really landing and resonating with our students. They're excited about taking it. And our leadership at the sites are responding to that excitement and increasing the elective offerings. Athletics. So this year, we have for the first time a district athletic TOSA. And his name is Byron. One of the things that Byron's been able to do is, is kind of come in and hit the ground running and putting in some new procedures and practices. One of the new things that we've put in place this year, we moved away from something we used to use called Sportsnet, which wasn't very effective in helping track teams or communicate out to our families. We moved to Parent Square this year. So when you look on the right side around communications, we've been able to really streamline not only the communications going from the site, these out to families, but communications from coaches to families using Parent Square. Excited to see so many kids in our district really wanting to participate in sports. We have twelve hundred students registered. We finished fall, we're currently in winter one season. The students have had a chance to play volleyball, cross-country, black football, seventh and eighth grade basketball. Byron, before the even season started, had new uniforms ready for folks, had new equipment ready for folks. And we're really happy that our Montessori schools are growing their participation in our district athletics program. So we've been able to have our North Shoreview students participate in girls and boys seventh grade basketball. So cross-country started last year, but we've added basketball this year. And for Parkside, they're looking forward to participating in tennis and being part of that. So very excited to see that growing. And then the last piece before I turn it over to Dr. Rubikaba is talk to you a little bit about a new approach to professional development that started last year and that we've kind of grown this year. So it's a three-pronged approach. One of the things that we really know is important is that when there's professional development, it's not just happening at the whole level of the district, only in summer PD in three times a year, but that it's happening at multiple levels. It's happening at the principal level, it's happening at the teacher leader level. And so this three-pronged approach is showing you that when there is a focus, and our focus is academic discourse and creating a sense of belonging in classrooms. It's really important that you have a multi-layer approach so that teacher leaders can work directly with principals who are also getting the same professional learning. Classroom teachers who may not be a lead teacher, but they're getting the same focus when they have district PD. So this is specific to wanting to make sure that the system is focused on the same thing across the board and not just at one level. So here on this slide, you'll see that the focus for the principal leadership team this year has been instructional rounds. All the principals at the middle school level have participated in these instructional rounds. We just actually have one at Bayside on Tuesday. We just had one at Bayside. And one of the things that we've done new this year is at Student Voice. It's been eye-opening for principals to sit in a room and hear from a diverse group of students about what their experience is like in the classroom. We've collected that data and transcribed those anonymously, of course. Those student listening sessions and principals have been able to take that back to their staff in staff meetings and talk about the academic discourse and belonging that they're getting at the district PD and, and give them a sense of how that's landing for students. Or what else do we need to do differently? So it's having that kind of back and forth. That's really important if you want to see implementation. One of the things we know is that traditional PD, where it's just district and you stay at that level, it doesn't really filter down to the implementation of seeing it showing up in the classroom. You have to get a go at it from a different approach. And so the lead teacher piece is where that comes in. Because the lead teachers are having these conversations, but then they have a chance, like for example, Laura and Pierce has also participated as a lead teacher. They have an opportunity to go and observe colleagues. They have an opportunity to give colleagues feedback about how things are going and have conversations. Adult learning is a different skill set. It's not the same as teaching students. And so we have to provide PD at the district level to support teacher leaders who are going in each other's classrooms to know how to engage with a colleague and have those conversations. If you see something not going so great, like how do you have that conversation with another teacher? Really important work that has to happen in order to really see implementation. All right, and this is just to give you a sense of like our cadence and when we need and how often. So you'll see here on this slide, the lead teacher meetings and the principal. IOT stands for Instructional Leadership Team Meetings, so the one I had mentioned we had just had. And we've really grounded this work into seminal texts, one called Coaching for Equity by Elena Aguilar and Better Conversations by Jim Knight. And we've used that to really guide the PD for those two groups. So as I mentioned, principals are part of their own IOT. And I'm gonna pause for a moment to give you an opportunity to just take a look at some of their reflections from this year's work, the professional learning that they've engaged in thus far this year. We're gonna wait until after we finish this section and we'll do comments and questions. Yeah, as I mentioned, our lead teachers, they're across our schools. Here's some of the feedback that they have shared with us so far this year. And then I feel like you've been up here more than I, I kind of warned you that you would be up here, Laura. But if you or Pierce, if you guys want to share anything, I know that Pierce, you don't have to feel like you can come up. Yes, you back there, but Laura, if you want to come up and share any thoughts about just being part of this process.
I'll think about it for a moment.
Okay. We already have your words here.
Yeah. They do have your words here, Pierce, so you don't have to come up.
Right, so in this district, I've been able to do a lot of work around mathematics, right? Which is one year to the next to the next. But our students are experiencing an entire system. They're spending seven periods with different subjects and different teachers. So Kinyeta brought this idea of, well, we can't just work on what's happening in a math classroom. How do we work on the system that a student experiences? And this vision of how are they belonging? And also, how is discourse helping them access and grow in their learning? Is the common theme through all of it? So you know, having been teaching for many years and in a few different districts, there's been a lot of, here's someone from the outside who's gonna come in and teach you how to do teaching and learning. And it's often very removed from the practice. I've also been at schools where it comes from the bottom up. And we teachers, let's get together, let's talk about it. But then often we only work on what we bring. So as Kinyeta found Phyllis Goldsmith and Emily, and they really kind of come in and work both directions. They bring outside resources like the books that you shared, theory. They guide us in having conversations, they help it connect it to our practice. They ask us, where do you see this in your practice? How are you going to elevate it? And then they encourage us to take on leadership roles and run PDs. So you know, I get to do a couple of PDs every year, which I really enjoy. This last time I got to do PDs, not just with math teachers, but with all teachers about creating a belonging classroom. Now, we live in this system that's pretty traditional in that, right? These students, they go to seven different teachers, and it's a bit of a factory model. And we're asking the question, how do we help students belong? You know, Brené Brown says the opposite of belonging is fitting in. And for so long, it's been fit the mold, come in, act like this. We're trying to shift that narrative. If a student truly feels like they belong, they're gonna access learning. And that's what Kinyeta's brought to us through this program. And we're just starting it, right? And we're just, this is our first year of really building the cohort. But when Kinyeta asks teachers, who wants to do this? You've got a lot of different teachers from all over. It was fantastic. And it just, we're excited to be there. We're looking forward to the next one. And even though twenty-five years, twenty years, twenty-two years of teaching experience, yeah. I'm like, I can't wait because I still have more ways to grow. So thank you for doing it. I really enjoyed it.
And Laura, I think it's also true that it's similar to the, it, it partners with the concept of peer coaching because it's, it's a strategy intended to create a culture as opposed to a strategy intended to give me a number or to change one discrete outcome for one group of kids at one time. It's really saying, if you have thirty teachers who feel that as a result of this, of this process, they can go and share their strategies with, with two hundred other teachers or more on a daily basis at a middle school, it's, it's powerful. It's powerful beyond that timeframe, which in this case, you had the, this, I don't know if it was a ladder if you intended it that way, but you have the progression of when these engagements were happening. It goes beyond that. It's, that's the day it happens, but the outcome of it, it stretches further beyond that. And hopefully it feels like part of a process rather than, as we in education have learned over the decades, you go to a training, it has nothing to do with what you're doing back in your classroom or worse with the last one you got or the next one you're good. And we're trying to create coherence and alignment. So I think that's, you know, looking at this kind of feedback and, and seeing the process come about it, I think we're headed in that direction.
Thank you. I think that was probably a good time to pause before we switch over to middle school attendance. So if there's any questions, comments on, let's see, you covered ELA, ELD, athletics and PD.
Just a quick question about the, the principals as instructional leaders. And I know we're here to talk about middle school, but do we, are we doing anything similar for elementary school? Okay.
It has a different name, but we are definitely doing similar work at the elementary level.
I have one follow-up on just like the professionals development, which like, I, I mean, I remember getting a lot of not great feedback like years ago around professional development, like doing all the things Superintendent Choa that you shared. So it's like great to see, you know, just to see the feedback that we're getting, at least from a select group of educators and our administrators on PD. One of the things I was wondering, how much it exists now and or how much it's like on our radar in terms of professional development? I know for a while, David, we were doing like lesson study. I'm just wondering like, how many opportunities are there for just like all teachers to observe and to like engage in sort of, you know, just like that peer observation as like a part of professional development? And how, I mean, I know that it's a part of like what happens with TOSSAs, working with teachers and that sort of thing. But is there like a systematic way where that's happening for all teachers? If not, is that something that's on our radar? Like where do we maybe see this growing if not?
I think, I think the avenue is definitely through our instructional, our peer coaching model. David, you're, you're welcome to come join us for a minute and just talk a little bit about the process we're using to administer surveys at the end of our, our bigger sort of one, not one day, but our bigger non-student day PD. I know we have a great deal of data there. I would have said two years ago that we really need to devote the majority of our time to, to getting to a baseline place with our math instruction and with our, with our early literacy instruction and with our middle school, either restorative or, you know, sort of the introductory PD that was so essential that first summer of twenty-one and then again this summer, sorry, twenty-two and then the summer of twenty-three. And I really think this upcoming summer and the subsequent fall is a time for us to be able to think about creating systems for teachers to be able to say, I want to go observe other teachers and this is what I hope to find. And I wouldn't have said that two years ago because I think we were still in that forming stage with our new programs and our new curriculum. And it's, it's probably time for us to think about that and to plan for that. So David, I just want to give you a chance to fill in on, on just the, the surveys that we use and the kind of data you see.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, just speaking up to that point, you know, we, the summer PD, the three days of PD that we offered during the school year, I've shared that data with you. We're getting very consistently strong feedback about that work, which to those of you who were here, that was not what we were getting before. And, and even, you know, attendance on the PD days is much stronger than it used to be. So, and then I think kind of to your question of, you know, as, as Diego was saying, as we, as we sort of go deeper into professional learning practices, kind of beyond that, those foundational efforts, I think, I think there's probably an example of what's happening in the middle school mathematics where teachers are having an opportunity to co-teach and somebody can step in while another steps back or go see another, go see another teacher's classroom. I think that is kind of our most developed area of work. I think you will, you'll see that kind of, that deeper work. I think, I think with our science team, we're emerging into that as well through the, you know, the most recent adoption and the kind of collaboration I see going on around curriculum. I think in other content areas, it's, it's to be done. You know, we're not, we're not as sort of broadly developed. And frankly, from a strategic plan point of view, we haven't invested the resources there to, to bring that about. So I think the good news is in alignment with the strategic plan, we're seeing that broader and deeper professional learning. And then it's the question of, okay, how do we sort of, you know, sort of bridle back on that work and invest in other, other areas where, you know, that are in need of development?
Yeah, no, and I totally get that and you can't do everything. And I know, I recognize like the trajectory of all of this being exceptionally intentional. And also like, you know, you hear kind of the reflections from folks around like the power of like seeing, you know, this in action. And I just remember that, you know, just from my own experience in the classroom. And so just something to keep on the radar. Cool. All right, moving on to attendance, unless there's anything, we'll wait and we'll hold on public comment. I think because we haven't had a lot until the end. So public, if you have comments, keep notes and we'll take them again in like twenty minutes or so as we're wrapping up.
Great. So it brings me great joy to continue the conversation with my colleague, Kinyeta, to now focus on kind of wellness goal at the middle school level. And as Kinyeta mentioned at the outset, equity is like the run-through goal in both her, part of the presentation with curriculum and instruction and also with wellness, right? And I intentionally started off this section with attendance because as a data-driven district, right? And part of our strategic plan is really to, to let our, the data drive our decisions and the practices that we implement to support students and increase wellness for all kiddos. And it's, you know, it's, it also the perfect precursor in terms of data to the journey I will take you to showcase a lot of the great work that we're doing to increase wellness at our middle schools. What would like to start off and just FYI, these are not stock photos. These are actually photos throughout the whole presentation. These are actually photos throughout the whole presentation of snapshots across our middle schools. Um, so, hope you enjoy those. Uh, start off with kind of defining chronic, uh, absenteeism, right? Uh, so we're, we're talking ten percent. And the data that I'm, uh, going to show, uh, the community and board trustees, um, uh, is data that, that we pulled in the first fifty days of school. So if we look at ten percent, right, we're looking at kiddos who missed five days of school. Uh, and per ad code, when we're, we pull this data, uh, it's, uh, there, there's no kind of uh, excuse for a day that is not a part of, uh, whether you're, the child is fell ill or whatnot, it's counted. Yeah. Um, so here, uh, is, uh, by grade level total and by middle school. Uh, you can kind of see where, uh, our chronic absenteeism rates are, uh, as of November, uh, uh, the fiftieth day of, of school. Um, you know, you, you'll notice here, right, where, uh, at Abbott, we got twenty-one percent, seventh grade, right, it kind of goes down. And then, uh, in eighth grade, it kind of, there's a spike, right, to twenty-nine percent and then overall twenty-three percent. Uh, as you go through the different, uh, middle schools, uh, you'll, you'll notice kind of similar numbers, right? Um, Baudich kind of having like the lowest, uh, numbers. Uh, this data point is super important, um, because our administrators at the middle school level use this data um, uh, to work with their CARES teams, uh, which are composed of counselors, wellness TOSSAs, right, restorative justice TOSSAs, and they come together and weekly uh, use these data to drive decisions on how to support kiddos and does, uh, lower uh, this chronic, uh, these chronic absenteeism, uh, percentages. Um, I think it's important also to do that comparison between, uh, a year ago, right? Still at that fifty-day mark, uh, in, in this year. Uh, because we, we always want to kind of track, uh, how things are going. Because again, uh, data determines our, our steps. Data determines the conversations we have around how to best support our students. Uh, so that they have every opportunity to come to school and thrive. Uh, here, what we want to see, right, are drops, right? Like, we want to lower that chronic absenteeism. Uh, so you, you can kind of do like the comparison by grade level, uh, at each school. Um, and then the total, right, like Abbott, Abbott's total this year, uh, their chronic absenteeism rate did drop, right, in the first fifty days. Um, uh, and then, right, we see Bayside, it went up, right? And so this immediately, right, uh, you know, the, our site administrators at Bayside and then the team, the CARES team, you know, addressed this immediately. Uh, and so the, these report, um, these data come, come out routinely through our coordinator of assessment and data. Uh, and, and so our CARES teams are able to make, um, on the spot and very timely uh, support plans for our kiddos and outreach with families, uh, to lower these percentages. Uh, going down to Borrel, right, they dropped, uh, which is what we want to see in Baudich as well, uh, the overall percentage drop. Uh, I also pulled the equity subgroups, um, uh, just, you know, in comparing the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Uh, because it's important, uh, to really focus in on some of our most vulnerable kids in our system. And, and ensuring that we provide those extra supports. Uh, EL, uh, is the acronym for English Learner. Uh, SWD is our Students with Disabilities and SED, Social Economically Disadvantaged kiddos, uh, in our system. Again, what we want to see, year after year, is a decline, right? Uh, you know, bringing those chronic absenteeism, uh, is, uh, percentages down. Um, and when we don't see that, right, that immediately alerts our CARES team meetings to, to meet and review data by student, right? Uh, to, to figure out what's going on, you know, we, as I will review later on in the presentation, we have teams of professionals who are, are offering some very deep and thoughtful support to our students and families uh, through wraparound services. This is a question of the data for equity. But addressing chronic absenteeism, uh, is a, a job you can't do alone. Uh, it, it does take literally a village, right? Um, and a, 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 a team that is really coming together, uh, uh, to address, uh, needs immediately, right? And, and use the data to drive our programs and our personnel allocations. Uh, and it's great to see all of these things implemented here, uh, because, I mean, I, years ago, when we were dreaming of these things, that strategic plan, uh, planning sessions, right? You know, these things are now being fully fleshed out and implemented, uh, at our sites. So we've got, you know, uh, an increase in school counseling, an increase, uh, in addition of teacher on special assignments, both, uh, student support and restorative, or practices, restorative justice TOSSAs. We've got mental health clinicians who are, um, uh, based at, at the district and are deployed and are, have a huge presence at our middle school sites, along with social workers. We've got this other group of program specialists, community services specialists, and attendance clerks who work together to include families, uh, as part of the process. Uh, we also have, as we know, our leadership team, right, our assistant superintendent, our director, and principal on special, uh, uh, special assignment, uh, who together, uh, do a lot of data review and bring teams together to provide that professional development guidance and onsite support. Like, we are on demand, like, every day and, and, and providing that support. Um, and I, I place these wellness centers and peace rooms, uh, uh, at the very end, because it's kind of segueing into, into this next part. Because I think this is some really important work that is happening a, at our sites. And it is, these are, uh, spaces that we've, uh, devoted, uh, to support students, to provide peace spaces for, for kiddos. Um, and when we think about restorative justice, like, what does that mean, right? Like, you're, you're, literally, you're restoring justice, you're restoring peace, right? And, and, and suspending judgment and helping our kiddos come together and problems solve on their own. Um, one key aspect here, um, has been, uh, our wellness centers. Uh, these are actual images of each of our wellness centers, um, uh, that are operating at all of our middle school sites. Uh, I want to commend the work of our counseling teams at each of these, because they, they run these, uh, wellness centers. They collaborate, they make sure that they are just thriving with student activity. So that kiddos can find, you know, the resources that they need, so, uh, socio-emotionally. Uh, uh, no matter the day, no matter the time of day. And, and this is really great. It, it builds a lot of sense of belonging and sense of safety for our kiddos. Um, also, Peace Room, uh, you may, or, uh, you may likely recognize, uh, the, this, uh, this uh, person who's being projected up here, uh, in these amazing images, uh, uh, the Peace Room, uh, Peace Room. Uh, and we've got Peace Rooms at all of our middle schools. This one is from Borrel Middle School, uh, Julianne Nakano, whom I, uh, who I invited, uh, I think who graciously accepted to come. Um, and she, uh, has been doing some really, really key and important work in, in unlocking the socio-emotional potential of our kiddos uh, in ways that I, I've not seen before, in ways that we have not seen, uh, at, at our middle schools, at schools in general. Um, and I think, uh, you know, I'll just let her take it away.
Well, thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, let's go ahead and hit, um, the videos. These are some of the student testimonies from what they've experienced.
Christian, you might have to turn the volume on your laptop down.
Oh, got it. Okay.
No, we can't hear it, Joe.
I'm sorry.
Let's try to start it one more time. Let's tell everyone what our. You were there.
You were there.
I was there, right. She was explaining about how her and another friend worked it out in the Peace Room. The space provided that communication, um, for them to resolve the conflict that they were facing. But a more comfortable way is out of the office, a more relaxed atmosphere, and they're able to express their feelings. And she was just so helped, just, just so thankful that she had the opportunity to just sit down with a, with her friend to just discuss, hey, what's been going on in her mind? What, why the conflict? And what happened was, there, it was an anger issue back in the fifth grade. But they brought it to forward to the seventh grade. So she held on to that anger, and then from there, she resolved it. She goes, well, I thought we were friends in the fifth grade, and now you're not friends with me right now. Like, what's going on? And then that happened, well, we kind of like unpacked that. They addressed that hurt first to her, so she'll be able to release that anger, and so the rumors will stop. So that's what happened. And I hear stories like that all the time. Students are holding on to anger that happened a year ago about their friendships. And then when we bring them in the Peace Room, we address it. So we can't just address the conflict right then and there. We have to go a little bit deeper, like, why the rumors? Why the whole, the gossiping? What's going on beyond that? Because you were friends first. You know, so when we address the past, we'll be able to bring it to the future and the present, and to be able to move on from there. So I've done since the start of the program, not even a program, the start of this whole initiative about how to deal with conflict resolution, since the, since day one, a hundred and twenty-seven. A hundred and twenty-seven restorative conversations, pre-conferences, mediations. And I've only had one repeat case where the student came back again, and we had to do the restorative again. You know, it has tremendously improved the relationships with students and students, students with teachers. So they'll be able to learn the same skills that we learned in the Peace Room of how to deal with conflict and how to communicate. And for them to be able to learn that as a life skill to move on. I said, this could happen with a future with a boss, with a significant other. These are skills that you're learning now to be able to carry this through adulthood, you know? And so the restorative process is a volunteer process. No one's there to be forced to make friends. I always say that as a norm, but they're there because they want to be there. They want to restore. And so now with that said, as students are now coming up to the office, say, hey, we want to restore. She wants to restore because there's rumors now being spread about her, but we want to restore. We want to get together with our friends to talk about it. You know, and that's what we do in that Peace Room. They want to do it. It's not a force thing, it's a volunteer, because they want to resolve it, you know? In fact, one thing today, I saw, uh, a student who was in a, um, conflict situation at the beginning of school. I see him now take a leadership role across our campus at Borrel, saying, hey, you know, no fighting. Let's all talk about it in the Peace Room. And then, again, I saw him today handshake another guy, said, hey, I was just kidding, I'm so sorry that I did that to you. So now, students are now learning vocabulary such as restorative. Students are saying, I'm sorry, I'm apologizing. You know how difficult that is, or even adults for us to apologize? They're learning vocabulary, that, that apology, you know, sets the ground, it re, it, it repairs at harm. So one thing that I do in two significant questions that I ask students is, who did that affect? All right, and we're talking mom, dad, staff members, other students who witnessed it. And how can you make things right? How can you make things right? You know, they accepted the responsibility, they're accountable for the actions. But how are you going to repair the harm or make things right with that person? You know, and then they said, well, I want to apologize. And then I said, along with that apology, how are you going to not prevent it to happen again? Where are you going to learn from this? You know, so I, I go really deep with the students, not to say, oh, I'm sorry, move on. Like, how are you going to not do it again? Or how are you going, if you're to reverse time, or what you would have done differently? So a lot of skills that we do in the Peace Room is all about the anger management. We, uh, trust the anger, you know, we address the hurt, because we just can't just solve it like one and doesn't seem sorry and with plea. We're, we're also doing prevention also too, you know, along with that. So the work, the room itself was built, and then they say, build it and they will come. That is absolutely true. So I really have to, um, really say hats off to our M and O crew, John Baharos, because he's the one that painted that room. The colors, the purple, the green, the lighting, the privacy walls, the carpet. You know, he's the one, he could help build that room. And the all, the support of administration staff, from district staff to school administrations, to our, to our TOSSAs, to our student support TOSSAs, to our admin, to our APs, all help create this team of us for us to work to be restorative. So it's just not me, it's just not the room. It's a huge amount of support that we receive from the district and from our administrative staff to help this go, to help this take off. And the results are what the students are saying. You know, build it and they will come. Yeah. And so you see the quote right there. That's actually from a parent quote. A parent wrote back and said how this has helped her son at her school.
Really powerful stuff. Um, so here's the team, right? Um, that make the magic happen at our wellness centers, at our Peace Rooms. And just, you know, through a lot of that, those interactions on the CARES teams to make the magic work for our kids, right? And then bring all these supports to them. Um, and you can see there's a, a huge investment in counseling, you know, and huge investment in student support and restorative practice. Um, LGBTQ plus support at our middle schools is, uh, alive and thriving. And it's making a huge, huge positive impact on how kiddos navigate, uh, their identities and, and feel safe and like assess the belonging at sites. Um, Mr. Israel Cruz is our teacher on special assignment for LGBTQ plus support. Um, and, uh, as part of our strategic plan, uh, his role is key uh, in supporting our counselors and our TOSSAs in, you know, elevating and, and supporting and, and having those conversations and having the information and resources to address kids who are, you know, questioning or who need someone to talk to, right? Um, and really, uh, allowing them to, to have someone to go to. And so he's actually done a lot of, uh, impressive work. And why this matters is again, the data, right? Um, the CHICS data, uh, from last year, right, uh, for this, uh, statement. Uh, my school is safe for students who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queers of questioning. Um, we had, uh, uh, you know, the middle, at the middle school level, uh, over seventy or higher percentage, right, across our grade levels, uh, saying agree or strongly disagree. And I think this deserves like a huge recognition of a lot of the amazing work that our administrators and our CARES teams and our staff, uh, are, are doing to support our kiddos. Um, and obviously, uh, the strongly disagree and disagree percentages, that's the stuff that we use, right? To continue the work, to continue, uh, providing these, these, these opportunities for kids to feel safe. These are some of the strategies, really briefly, that, uh, is, uh, we're implementing. Uh, we have a consultant, Nikki Eddy, uh, who is training our advisors for our GSAs. Uh, we've got GSA, uh, clubs at all middle school, which has been very supportive. Uh, we have, uh, GSA advisor check-ins that, uh, Mr. Cruz, uh, engages them, uh, to improve quality of supports. And he also helps plan and schedule family events that are LGBTQ plus things. Um, because input is super key, uh, we also have an LGBTQ plus task person. I wanted to, uh, uh, you know, honor that work that they're doing, uh, by, by, you know, putting their names on here, because they, they meet systematically, uh, throughout the year uh, with, uh, very clearly defined agendas to work and collaborate and provide that input on what more can we do to support our kiddos. Uh, community dialogue is super important, right? We can't just contain these conversations. We can't just contain these conversations for ourselves. But it's important that we also share our thinking, share our values through our podcast. So major shout out to our superintendent, Diego Ochoa, and our coordinator of communications, Diego Perez, who, you know, orchestrated this podcast with Israel, our TOSA, and our assistant superintendent of student support, Dennis Hills. It was just a really powerful, hopefully you get a chance to listen to this podcast. But it really gets at the heart of why this is important and why we do this to improve students' lives.
We've been meeting with a team of middle school students from across our, across our, it's really our four larger middle schools, but also North Shoreview and Parkside. And we have representation from every school. This group of students that we've invited to meet once a month here at the district office and give perspective of what they're experiencing in our schools, identify things that as teenagers, they think we need to pay more attention to, and then take on tasks that they feel passionate about. The work, the work is moving forward so that as a group, we are actually going to San Mateo Park Elementary School. The group wanted to make a difference in helping students learn how to read. So they're volunteering their time to go to San Mateo Park Elementary School and read to kinder first and second grade students. All the students in our council voted to have that as a program and went, signed themselves up to be able to do so. And historically, the school had had older kids come and read, but it just kind of fell away as the years progressed. And then as a group, they also made a decision at our last meeting to inaugurate in conjunction with our coordinator of communications, Diego Perez, a district-wide student speech and student presentation program that they're going to push out to all of our schools, grades four through eight. So we'll be encouraging our students to tackle important issues and to prepare speeches or to prepare themselves for extemporaneous speaking, all with the intent of letting the adults in this community hear what our kids think. So it really kind of dovetails with the idea of empowering student voices. And then, you know, the outcome of that is seeing these kids on stage at our elementary and middle schools sometime in May, telling us what they think about the important issues that affect them and their education. And it'll be all led by these teenagers who have a vested interest in seeing their own peers and their younger brothers and sisters and their neighbors speak to us about what they're experiencing in our schools.
This next section is a brief overview on middle school staffing. Specifically, it's a snapshot of new hires this current year. I will say, you may see that Abbott has a pretty high number of new teachers, but we expect it to lower, to be much lower next year in terms of new hiring. I do want to celebrate the impressive and amazing work happening at Abbott Middle School. They have really done a great job in ensuring student wellness, having systems in place, and really supporting the needs of the school community through collaboration. You'll notice, you know, a lot of these new hire numbers, right? And here are for Bayside, Borrell, Bowditch. They're pretty within the normal range for the most part. And as always, we're trying to provide that professional development, like all the offerings that Kenyatta shared earlier and that collaboration with them because we are really serious about, you know, staff retention and really keeping our amazing staff to support. And with that comes a lot of focus on supporting our leaders, right? And so they are also receiving some really deep and thoughtful professional development training from our consultant, Dr. Todd Cutler, who is a longtime previous principal and superintendent. And he and I kind of scheduled a series of some powerful professional development opportunities, both in person and virtual, so that we are guiding and providing support to our principals and assistant principals on increasing best practices in systems leadership area, in the relational leadership, and also teaching and learning, which is really the through line of all of our trainings. We have an exciting two-day in-person PD in January, and we're really planning that and getting really excited to bring them again in person. The last, we started off the year in July meeting, two days at Beach Park. And now we'll be at the Marriott Hotel to continue this collaboration and this powerful PD for our principals. Really briefly, I just want to honor and celebrate our impressive middle school principal team. Not only are they, as you can see, quite good-looking, but you know, I think, and I speak for us, right? We've both been middle school principals. It's not easy work, right? And it's easy to feel like you're siloed or like you're doing the work alone. And I hope that we have painted a picture, Kenyatta and myself, that they're not working alone, that they have a lot of support and that we're working together and collaborating. I'll say the same of our middle school assistant principal team. Again, just assembled this slide to really celebrate the hard work. They're leading CARES teams, pulling data on a daily basis, interfacing with families, dealing with challenging situations and approaching the work with that restorative lens, right? And I just want to honor our colleagues at all of our middle schools, the assistant principals. And thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Opening it up for any more comments, questions?
I had a couple of questions specifically on the student voice section. First, wanted to appreciate that we have some student voice now. My question was, because I zoomed in and I recognized several faces in this group, I was wondering, the, how did you select these students? And is there the GPA or like profile of a candidate or a person on this?
There's no GPA profile. All the students volunteered. We did get to a place where we wanted to find a student who had attended Abbott and a student who had attended North Shoreview because we wanted that true reflection of all of our schools represented. So our staff did pick up the phone and call some students whose parents had attended other meetings and did a little bit of outreach. I can tell you, we had about 35 students express an interest. And then we held interviews with students. And part of what we were looking for was more holistically, kids who sort of are opinionated and will tell you what they really think. Because I think teenagers, you know. But some want to, you know, but some are a little bit less, less prepared to put that out there. So we really went for kids and said, I'm going to tell you what I really think, because that's what we wanted to do.
So what I would like to see, and this is not my council, but I would like to have more student voices from students that are not the ones that consistently volunteered to be on student council and have like super good grades and are always the like star students. I would like to hear from the students that are struggling in school and maybe do not enjoy academics as much. And we'd love to hear from those that are maybe having some struggles and hear about, more about their experiences, and particularly in middle school. And so I would like, if there's any way to reach out to some of those students, get them and hear, empower their voices and be part of the council. I'd love to hear that. And I'm wondering if you have thought about maybe reaching out to some, maybe recent graduates from middle school and hear how their experiences in high school and maybe where, how they would reflect back on their middle school experience and maybe where they would shed some light on what their experience is like now. And I think for middle schoolers, it might be hard to say what they might think could be improved or changed or whatever without having some like distance and some perspective of a different experience. So just throw that out there for like, even maybe this council next year, you could bring them back in very good or something.
I think both are very doable. And I think both, we're coming up on a time to.
Sorry, guys. I had a question about the absenteeism data. So obviously, yes, I'm looking at, if you look at the cohorts, it's interesting to see that at least at some, you know, at some schools, at Abbott and Bayside, it seems like the, you know, you might look at the total number and it's, you know, roughly the same. But then if you look at the seventh to eighth grade cohort, you actually see like significant increases. And so I'm wondering if there's something going on with that cohort that's different, that if we can figure that out. So that's one piece of it, because it just seems like it's, you know, like, for example, the sixth to seventh grade cohort, it actually goes down by a couple of percentages. Bayside goes up a little bit. But then it just seems like there are some where there's a little bit of an increase or maybe it's flat, but then the other grade is like a big change. And so I know, you know, there's a lot of different reasons that absenteeism occurs. And we talked about how illness is still counted. But do we know the other common reasons that this is happening? Especially, you know, I'm looking at some of these numbers and for the equity subgroups, and they're pretty significant. Like, there's one, there's one number on here that's almost half. So it's like, that to me is, you know, it's concerning because like almost half of the students aren't showing up, you know, more than 10% of the time. It's just, yeah, so I just want to find out more about that.
Yeah, so a lot of, in terms of the reasons, I can certainly come loop around and bring you some data on that. Our staff do take data, right? I mean, they're kind of something meeting where CARES team and a lot of our CARES team meetings and conversations and student plan support meetings really focus on figuring out what's going on. And we often pull families in, right, and have those conversations with them. You know, I think it's a mixture of things, right? You know, it's first and foremost, right? It's like we're coming from the pandemic and I think now we're starting to move away from COVID, right? I think those rates are much lower and are not as significant in terms of the data. But there are other aspects, right? And every year comes with a different set of challenges that our kiddos are confronting, that our families are potentially confronting. And so that's, you know, that's part of the reason why, you know, we assemble CARES team meetings. And part of the reason why we've increased counseling and opened up peace rooms and opened up wellness rooms is to, you know, build schools where kids feel safe and kids just want to come to school, even if it's just to hang out at the peace room for 20 minutes that one day, right? And really, you know, building a lot of the supports that Kenyatta was mentioning too, right, on curriculum and instruction, you know, bringing in that support where kids feel challenged, but they're enjoying the learning, right? So yeah, I think there's definitely some work we can do to pull some data on the reasons that are, that represent those percentages.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just comments for me. I mean, it's, you know, I feel like we've had so many presentations, like this year in particular, where, you know, we think about like, talk about being like far removed from what's happening on the ground, from like where we're sitting, right? And thinking about like policies that are informed by like our teachers and our staff and a variety of stakeholders. But then to think about, you know, like restorative practices and all of these math, all of these things that have been like hot button issues where there have been like a lot of, you know, conversation about them, a lot of differing perspectives on them. And then to kind of see the implementation like come to life is just, it's just really great to see kind of all of like the policy shifts and then investment in resources and then like work that's happening on the ground, you know? Hearing about the peace room and the work that's happening there and the restorative justice practices, obviously all of the math stuff, which we spent some time on. I'm thinking about like the LGBTQ plus and Allison thinking about your point around like bringing back former folks. Like some of our first Equity Task Force members like four years ago were middle schoolers who were like, we need to do something about like what's happening. I have friends that are having like terrible experiences in middle school. And, you know, you know, we see it, we saw it then in our data. And so we've had like years and years of conversation and now like actually talking about work that we're doing to like make adjustments to what that experience is for some of our kids. Like, it feels like, you know, it's obviously happening later than we would have wanted, but the fact that it's like happening now and just we're hearing about the investment in that and the work that's happening in that is just really powerful. So thank you all for the work that you're doing like on a day-to-day basis to continuing moving the needle for, you know, for our kids. And it's great to hear, just to hear how that's going and to hear it reflected, reflected back. So.
I also think, Sarah, this, you know, it's worth mentioning, Israel is a person of color who is part of the community. He discusses this in a podcast. And he's a highly skilled counselor. His position is teacher on special assignment, but he was a counselor at Laurel Elementary School for the last couple of years, and he's dynamite. So when there's a concern that comes up at one of our middle schools, our staff can pick up the phone and call him and say, you know, I need somebody to think through this. A kid came to me and told me something, you know, about their gender identity. I don't know what to do with that information. I don't know what to, I don't know what steps to take. And then this is a person who can be at that site immediately. They're not bogged down with 20 other duties. This is, this is his sole focus. And he's out there with all of our schools and he's accessible. And then Julian didn't mention this during her remarks, but, you know, we try to be connected to our schools so that Julian can truly do the work of restorative practices and not be expected to have 45 other duties or tasks. And those positions didn't exist last year. They're new this school year. So as you pointed out, it's like, if we had done this presentation last year, a lot of what we're talking about wouldn't have been on the screen. Because it does take time to build systems. It started with the policy. It went into the fiscal planning and, you know, placing things. And now, now you're seeing it. And, you know, hopefully the part of this special board meeting is about members of the school board and members of our community hearing what we're doing and pushing our practice through the questions, through the comments, through the request for more data. So each time you comment on those things, it's an opportunity for us to stretch and deepen the practice.
I know I promised additional public comment one more time, so anyone here? All right, Joe, if we could open up public comment last time on Zoom, please?
Yes, thank you, President Watkins. Good evening. We're calling on speakers during public comment in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees are dialed in and all called in can dial star nine to raise their hands. And speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. Once time has expired, we will move to the next speaker. Again, I'll pause a moment for any raised hands. President Watkins, there are no public comments at this time.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you all so much for.
Any chance I can sneak in there?
Ah, go for it.
Where do you want me to stand? I don't know.
Wherever you want.
So Pierce, first of all, okay. Firstly, I just want to echo a lot of what Laura said earlier about the teacher leadership program. It is amazing. And I think the spirit of it also, like on multiple levels, I think is a really strong, long-term investment in the staff of this district. And teaching in particular, like the whole way it's set up, it's all like, all the incentives are for people to stay a long time or leave by the 10-year mark. So I think that that's really valuable and important. stay a long time or leave by the ten-year mark. So I think that that's really valuable and important. Um, and so I'm very excited about that and what that might signify. Having said that, um, on a, on a just a different piece, one thing I would love to see is as we continue moving forward and doing all of these amazing things, which I'm super excited about, I would love to see more opportunities for um, district-wide, staff-wide employ, kind of in the same vein that you were saying, right? Like, um, I don't wanna suggest I'm in the high GPA group, but I'm in a certain group that is speaking at board meetings. Um, and so how do we get more staff speaking and addressing concerns and like, where are the resources being dedicated? Are they making the impact that we're hoping they're making? Um, like, one personal question in my very myopic view is, uh, like, you know, I think we're spending roughly two-thirds of what we're spending on math in science, which is fine, like, there's many good reasons why that might be, and I'm not privy to any of them. Um, but, you know, I'd also be interested in how much of that is materials versus staff. Um, because to my knowledge, there's no TOSSAs for science outside of one in the district office. Um, and so there's a lot of these things floating around that I'm, again, not aware of. And how do we kind of uh encourage more of that bottom-up kind of reciprocal communication? Um, but having said that, I am super excited for what I'm seeing and super greater grateful for the leadership and hard work that everyone here is contributing. And uh, yeah. Um, thank you for the opportunity to make my own small little contribution. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for always being here. Um, alright, well, I think with that, um, we are ready to adjourn. Thank you all so much for putting this together and for all the work that all of you are doing to support our middle schoolers. Um, great that we have this dedicated time to focus on on middle school. So, um, and I will need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you, trustee Proctor, for the motion and trustee Trent for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned at seven twenty-seven. Thanks, everybody.
Israel wanted me to give four numbers.